In your bedroom.
Yeah.
We weren't back.
Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. A council meets here at City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Please note that council meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the community media center channel and website. Now we begin, as we do every meeting, we pledge the flag, followed by a homonym of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic, the stands one nation, under God, in the small. A team that has this role. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have that might interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Copies of the agenda are available here in front of room, the room for anybody who might like to. I have a statement for the record about a recent closed meeting for the council, about the closed meeting of Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. In accordance with the general provisions article, section three dash three zero six C two, the annotated code apparent and without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, April twenty eighth, May twenty five, at eight twenty nine P M, pursuant to general provisions article, section three, dash three zero five, B one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or other officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The motion was made by Mr. Kavachi, the second was made by Mr. Hoff, that led to the closed meeting, which unanimous. Mayor Becker was not in attendance for the closed meeting. The following staff members attended, city administrator in halls. The council took no official action during the meeting and the closed meeting adjourned at nine twenty P M. Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. I'm Callan Wood. It is a pleasure to have you back to do these. I mean, had to do all that heavy lifting last time.
It's so much.
It is. So thank you very much for being back to do this.
You're welcome. Oh, we're good. Are you okay? All right. So, uh, Major Price, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. Some reason I always. Right. Um, so this is a mayoral proclamation for National Police Week, uh, twenty twenty five. Whereas by a joint resolution approved on October first, nineteen sixty two, Congress designated May fifteenth of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week during which May fifteenth occurs as National Police Week. And whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand sworn law enforcement officers now serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Westminster Police Department. And since the first recorded police death in seventeen eighty six, over twenty four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And this year, three hundred and forty five names will be added to the law enforcement memorial in honor of fallen officers in twenty twenty four and the past. And National Police Week draws approximately forty thousand attendees to join together in various services throughout the week, honoring the men, women, and canines that have died as heroes. And now therefore I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim May eleventh through the seventeenth as National Police Week in the City of Westminster, adopted this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty five. Mr. Price.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. Do a picture here for Abby real quick. Thank you. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
No, we'd just like to thank you for your support and the council's support. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You always have it. Right, thank you. All right. Andrew, you're next. So Westminster, uh, recently became a bird city, uh, just a month or two ago. And this proclamation is in recognition of World Migratory Bird Day, May tenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And many communities recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes in both their summer and winter homes. And public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And since nineteen ninety three, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly three hundred and fifty species that travel between nesting habits in our community and throughout North America, and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern United States. And while World Migratory Bird Day is officially held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day, and planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and civilians. And World Migratory Bird Day is not only a date to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. And now therefore I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, join the common council and the city staff members in urging all community members to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large, adopted this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty five. Thank you for being here to accept the awards. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, we are working hard to, uh, to get all of our information together to officially be the bird city. We've been putting our, um, lots of coordination into it, so we're excited about this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Um, just two other things before we move on to our next items. Uh, I want to recognize our new director of human resources for her first council meeting, Ms. Sharice Brown. Thank you for joining us here in the city of Westminster and for coming to the meeting. Thank you. Great to have you, Libs.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
Uh, also, um, I want to take another, do another introduction. Um, when Dr. Julia Jaskin became president of McDaniel College, one of the things that she did was commit to have a member of senior leadership team from the college join us as often as possible at council meetings. And she has stuck with that faithfully. And it's been great to have somebody here to share the little news about what's happening up on the hill uh, with us and to be able to take back to the college leadership, uh, what's happening here in the city. So tonight we have Dr. Richard Smith with us. He is the associate president for institutional mission and belonging, as well as the college chapter. So Dr. Smith, thanks for coming tonight. Anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
So it's probably brief. Just letting you know, this upcoming Saturday, we'll have our graduate commencement. And then next Sunday is our undergraduate commencement. And then finally, um, I'm the last person you're gonna see for a little while. So over the summer, not as much as it reports, so we'll, we'll take a break. But we will be back in the fall to be with you ahead.
Right, very good. Well, we will look forward to assuming these, uh, you know, these. Uh, now, um, we have a public hearing. Public hearings in the city of Westminster are conducted by the mayor. So I'll turn the gallows over to Dr. Becker.
Thank you much, uh, very much, uh, Mr. President. Um, so I'm gonna call the, uh, public hearing order at seven oh nine P M. The mayor and common council of the City of Westminster are conducting this public hearing on the proposed F Y twenty six budget at the mayor and common council meeting scheduled on Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty five, to receive public comment on the City of Westminster's fiscal year twenty six budget. The City of Westminster's proposed annual budget, F Y twenty six, is scheduled for adoption on Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak? Period none. I will close this public hearing at seven ten P M.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. Thanks, John.
That's an easy one.
Um, next on my agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes of the mayor and common council meeting of April twenty eighth and the closed meeting of the same date. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
There's second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's a pro, say nay. The aye seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent count is approved. Uh, there is one item on the consent calendar this evening. We have a motion to approve the consent count.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
I will make a second.
Second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's a pro, say nay. The aye seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent count is approved. Report from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. It's like I'm making up for not being here last week. Um.
Maybe this is gonna take a while.
I do have some comments. Uh, so, um, I'd just like to start, uh, by saying the last two weeks have been incredibly busy with work on the budget. Um, the budget process in the City of Westminster is an all hands on board event as the budget takes shape for next year. Staff have the opportunity to provide context for the budget and help shape the direction it takes. Special thanks goes to Ms. Teresa Rogers, our finance director, Ms. Krista Gardner, our budget consultant and city administrator, Ms. Impulse, for providing, uh, several finance committee and, uh, council work sessions over the last few weeks regarding the budget. Um, I do have some more comments on the budget, but I'm gonna save those for a little bit later in the meeting.
All right.
I'm not done.
That's okay. I want to tell you all, I'll just.
I want to congratulate, um, local business owner Bernie Vogel, who was recognized by McDaniel College, uh, last week with the twenty twenty five Delta of Maryland Lifelong Learner Award. Um, this is given by, uh, Phi Beta Kappa. This award is given to individuals or groups, um, who have pursued intellectual inquiry beyond their professional field, demonstrating lifelong learning. Um, Bernie Vogel, of course, is the owner of Genie Birds Bakery, uh, on Main Street. Next weekend, the farmer's market opens. Uh, please come out next Saturday to enjoy the opening day festivities. Uh, there are, uh, new events planned for this year, as well as many returning vendors, as well as some new vendors. Outside the budget, it's been quiet except for last Saturday, when I enjoyed Flower and Jazz. Um, I hosted Congressman Johnny Olszewski, uh, for a few hours that morning to stroll along Main Street and enjoy lunch and a drink at Covellent before heading back to D.C. Uh, council president Peccarero and council member Hoff joined me as well. These relationships with our federally elected, uh, officials are important to maintain, given that we often submit requests to the federal government for funding. And Representative Olszewski, as well as senators Van Hollen and also Brooks, their help is all valuable. The congressman enjoyed his day immensely. He was impressed at the size of the crowd we draw for events in Westminster, the quality of the vendors, and most importantly, the friendliness of the community. Uh, so I wanted to say thank you to all the residents of Westminster who came to Flower and Jazz, uh, on Saturday to help celebrate the day. The weather was perfect. I think we were all happy because it did not rain, as it often does. Um, and then last, um, I just want to say thank you, uh, to the community of Westminster for giving me your support for the last four years. Uh, as I've served as mayor, I have been incredibly humbled and honored to have fulfilled this role. It's been a pretty amazing four years with many projects accomplished and some in the pipeline. Tomorrow is our municipal election, and I would once again ask for your vote, uh, for my reelection. Polls are open from seven A M. until eight P M. It's going to be rainy. Um, but I and some volunteers will be at the polls all day long, uh, in the rain. Um, also running tomorrow are council members, um, Kavachi and Hoff. Um, so tomorrow, when you've got a break and you live in the city, um, come out in the rain. Don't worry about it. Come, come and vote. Stop and say hi at the polling locations. That's all, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, uh, Dr. Becker. Um, we want now to, uh, read your reports. Begin as we always do with our liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple of, um, we have a number of exciting events coming up at the, uh, the Carroll Arts Council. I want to in particular call your attention to the afternoon with Mary Shellman. And that will take place on Saturday, May twenty fourth. It's one of the events that has been scheduled in commemoration of the nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And many of us are also excited about the free outdoor summer family movies that will be taking place out at the amphitheater at Carroll Community College. Um, they will run on Tuesdays at eight thirty from June the twenty fourth through July the twenty ninth. A lot of really exciting, um, a lot of exciting programming coming up. Oh, I want to mention also Art in the Park, which is always one of my favorites. That's Saturday on June the seventh, um, from ten to four, uh, here at the City Hall grounds. Uh, but again, a lot of exciting programming at the Carroll Arts Center. Check their website. Their website, very, very good, very informative, uh, for all the exciting, um, events coming up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, next we'll go to our Economic and Community Development Committee. Mr. Hoff.
I have nothing to report tonight, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um, on behalf of the Finance Committee, uh, let me just say that, uh, we'll have some remarks when we get to the legislative ordinance later in the meeting. Um, on behalf of the Personnel Committee, I will just say that we are very pleased, as I mentioned earlier, to have a new director of human resources. And now that we have one, we will be having a personnel committee at some point, uh, because we got lots to talk about, sure. Um, public safety, Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, three of our newest officers successfully completed their first year uh, and provisionary period, earning the rank of private first class. Congratulations to PFC Eve Haynes and, uh, Ramirez. Each of them has had an outstanding first year and continues to perform at an exceptional level. With the recent retirement of Captain Schuster, which, uh, we all got a chance to say goodbye to him and we'll miss him dearly. Um, Chief Ledwell has announced that there is a promotional process for the ranks of captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and corporal, and it will begin in June. PFC Victoria Ash and PFC Jonathan Ray will be recognized at the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Awards on May twentieth for their lifesaving actions on November twenty third, twenty twenty four, when they rescued an incapacitated citizen from an overturned burning vehicle following a traffic accident. I know we got to hear a little bit about that on the internal award ceremony, but that's wonderful that they're recognized externally. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate chief and deputy chief, who's with us this evening, um, for a job really well done on winning a governor's office of crime prevention, um, and crime, crime control and prevention grant for twenty three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for the purpose of, uh, longevity for some of our younger officers. Uh, that's great work. Thank you for the work that you put in to win that. It's wonderful that you won that, uh, that, uh, award. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kavachi. Uh, next is, uh, Public Works, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, for Public Works, along with all the normal, everyday work that our Public Works departments takes place doing, um, they also help prepare for the Flower and Jazz Festival and the Wakefield Mudder's Day Run, which I'll talk about in a few moments. Um, they prepared and installed all the hanging baskets on Main Street. And now, if you notice and look up as you walk down Main Street, the veteran banners are now, um, all the way down Main and Pennsylvania Avenue. So they can all, um, complete, completed also. And that will take me right into the Public Works, uh, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec Department committee report. That's exactly. Um, so on Saturday, May tenth, Westminster hosted two remarkable events that united our community. First, the Flower and Jazz Festival returned to Main Street for its thirty fourth year, drawing thousands of attendees to historic downtown Westminster from ten A M. to four P M. Main Street was transformed into a vibrant marketplace, featuring over two hundred vendors, offering a variety of plants, flowers, shrubs, and handcrafted items and delicious food. The air was filled with the sounds of live jazz performances across multiple sta- stages, including the Josie Malavi Jazz Fusion Band, and I apologize if I butchered that name. Um, the Noah Pierre Band and the Shambogi Band, providing a delightful soundtrack to the day's, um, festivities. Families enjoyed the Safe Kids Zone presented by the Carroll County Health Department, which also offered health, um, healthy and educational activities, um, regarding bicycle safety, emergency preparedness, and children's mental health. Additionally, the City of Westminster's booth provided free flowers to all the moms to celebrate Mom's Days. And if that's not enough for our Parks and Rec Department on one day, they decided to undertake a new event to add to that event. And that was the inaugural Mudder Day, Mudder's Day Five K and Mini Mudder. Um, a thrilling event that combined fitness, fun, and family-friendly adventure. A total of two hundred and forty nine participants registered for the event with a hundred eighty nine individuals tackling the challenging five K course, which featured sixteen obstacles, seven mud pits. Sixty children aged ten and under participated in the one miler, the mini-mudder, navigating seven obstacles and three mud pits designed for younger participants. The event fostered a strong sense of community with the participants of all ages, skill levels, coming together to embrace the spirit of adventure, camaraderie, and muddiness. Um, muddies, smiles, and laughter were abundant as runners crossed the finish line, many expressing their eagerness for the event to return next year. And I will, um, say that, yes, they all did. Every single person that went past my little station, except two little children, were excited and laughing and having fun, some muddy, some not. Uh, but there's only two little kids that really, I think, were not happy with their mother for dragging them. Outside of that, it was absolute, I had a wonderful experience running my station. Um, so thank you. And next year, I think I will try to attempt. Maybe I'll go run a few of the mud pits and see if that was, but I think I'll attempt it. Uh, and that's all I have.
All right, very good. Thank you. And, uh, finally, uh, the Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
There'll be no report this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Um, next item is, um, council comments and discussion. Right. This is an opportunity for council members, uh, to share any thoughts they have on any items that are not elsewhere on this, uh, council agenda for the evening, um, but, and, um, not part of the committee report, so. Um, I'm gonna lead off tonight. I just want to have a couple of things I'd like to share first is that, uh, you know, congratulations, congratulations to everyone from the, uh, Flower and Jazz Festival, Ms. Gilbert, her team, our corps, city police, everybody who was involved. Wonderful event, as, as Ms. Gilbert and the mayor both said, and it was, you know, just a great day for everybody. I was pleased to get the vote for the city bird, in keeping with our, you know, proclamation on migratory birds today. Uh, I voted for the eastern bluebird because its color was blue, which is the city's color, so I thought that made the most sense for me. Um, I also just wanted to note, because I always take a lot of pleasure in this, that not only do we see so many hardworking city staff there, which of course, it's their job to do it cheerfully and they do a great job. But I'm also always so pleased to see other city staff members come out to enjoy the day. And, you know, I saw quite a few of them on Saturday, you know, obviously they've got, you know, their own families and lives that they leave and, you know, other things to do, but it's great that they come out and be, to be part of the community. It's nice to see them all there. So thanks to all of you who were able to join us. Want to say a couple of other words as well. So Westminster is unique in that the council here in Westminster elects its own president to preside over its meetings. Unlike other municipalities where the mayor presides over the meetings, or in some cases, the top vote getter of the council election winds up taking on that role. Council presidents in Westminster do a lot more than just chair our meetings. They have significant responsibilities outside the council. They appoint our committees, working with the city administrator, the city attorney, and the city clerk to ensure that the council's directions are clear and that the council's needs are met, and occasionally standing in for the mayor. It's an interesting and important role, but a demanding one as well. For the last six years, my colleagues have honored me by allowing me to serve as their president. As I look back, I'm proud to have effectively partnered with two mayors to lead the council and the city through the pandemic and its aftermath, the renovation and occupation of our new city administrative building, the selection and transition to a new city administrator, the planning and state approval of our water reuse facility, and an important legacy event that I'm particularly proud of. A very thoughtful approach to, to developing and approving the Wakefield Park in a community-oriented way, as well as its soon-to-be completed clubhouse, which, you know, is going to be something that's going to long outlast all of us. As well as the day-to-day business of governing the city. In Westminster, the council president is a servant leader. In these six years, I've done my best to lead collegially and put the needs of my council colleagues individually and the body as a whole on my end. Unfortunately, recently I find that my professional responsibilities demand more than more of my time. And it's becoming harder to fulfill the responsibilities of council president as I would wish. Accordingly, as we look forward to tomorrow's city election and the organizational meeting of the council that will follow a week after that, I've decided that the time has come for me to step down as council president and allow one of my colleagues to take on that role. Accordingly, I will not be a candidate for council president when the newly elected council organizes next week. I thank you all for the privilege of having served all of you for the last six years as your president and look forward to supporting my successor as you all supported me. And now we move on to Mr. Kavachi, Krista House.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, in light of that, that's a hell of a resume that you just ran off over six years. That's quite, quite a few accomplishments that you've presided over. And I've fortunately been able to sit to your right for these past six years and watch you do just an awesome job. And you're gonna be sorely best, um, as the council president. But the good news is, you're not going anywhere. So we, uh,
Pinnies seats.
Right. You were gonna move to a different seat, but other than that, uh, we still get to, uh, take full advantage of all your twenty-three years of experience, uh, sitting up here in this status. Um, so, uh, the other thing I wanted to make a quick comment on tomorrow's election day, uh, and I just wanted to make a quick comment about Mayor Becker. Um, like council president Peccarero, I've also sat next to her for eight years. Or is it, or was it, were you on the council for four?
Well, I was on the council, we were councilors.
Four, four years, that's what I'm saying. Four years on the council, or four years as mayor, right?
Four years, we were just mayor, yep.
And, uh, we've been very fortunate to have her as mayor. I certainly hope, uh, hope she will continue to be mayor when we reconvene, uh, next Monday, but that's up to the voters. And I just wanted to say that she has been phenomenal to work with as well. Got a couple of fantastic leaders, uh, to my left. So that is it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm also very excited about the upcoming, uh, farmer's market uh, opening, uh, this Saturday on May seventeenth. Um, we've worked really hard on that market, and, uh, I think it brings a lot of folks to Westminster. And I think it does a really, really good job. I'm also looking forward to the May twentieth, two thousand, uh, twenty-five, uh, Chamber Public Safety Awards. I'm happy that my colleagues are going to be, uh, to be honored for their work. Um, great work, um, on the part of, uh, Wreckin Parks and, um, uh, the police and, um, and, uh, the Public Works, um, folks, when the, uh, thirty-fourth Flower and Jazz Festival and the Mudder's Run. I was greatly amused to get pictures of several of my friends that were, um, full of mud from head to toe. Um, and I have somewhat fond memories of doing that when I was in the rain corps. I guess under different circumstances. Um, I also want to congratulate Bernie Vogel for his lifelong learning award. It's, um, really great that the college has recognized him. Uh, he does a lot of great stuff for our communities, and, uh, we really appreciate, uh, that he was recognized for that. Um, I've worked with a lot of council presidents over the years, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, Mr. Peccarero. I mean, we go back a long time. Um, we go back to when we were bringing forward the environmental, uh, weaknesses forward back in, is it far back as the, as the late eighties? I think it is. So, uh, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. You've really made quite a difference. It's quite a legacy uh, for the City of Westminster, and we really appreciate it. Um, and that goes into tomorrow's election. I'm, I'm really looking forward to working, uh, four more years with, uh, council member Dan Hoff and Tony Kavachi, and I'm really looking forward to working with the mayor. I think she's done a phenomenal job for our community, and I think, uh, everyone deserves another four years. I think it's just a great group, and I'm really excited. I think it's just a great group and I'm really excited uh at the idea of us working together and continuing to bring progress to the community. And that would be my remarks, Mr. President. I love you.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. Ms. Gilbert.
Hi, I just want to encourage everyone to come out and vote tomorrow. Um, we, the voting polls are open from seven AM, seven to eight, seven to eight, seven AM to eight PM, either at the um community pool or at the fire department. And um I also wanna um thank our council president for his dedication as our council president um for the past six years, which is my entire time on council, so um thank you very much. And I look forward to the next two years until the next election is up in two more years.
Right?
Yep. I said right.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Ms. Hough.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I greatly appreciate your service uh these past four years. Whoever fills your role, uh I, I think they'll have a, a lot to uh learn as far as running a really good meeting. Uh, cause you run a phenomenal meeting. Um, and um, I, I really appreciate having the opportunity to, to learn a lot of things from you over these past four years. Um, and again, I'm looking forward to tomorrow's election. Um, um, and I'm excited for all three of us to return. Um, I, I know the mayor will be out at the polls and uh he'll be out there uh running around as well and he'll look for her shirt, he'll look for my shirt and uh be glad to talk to anybody who might come up to us. Um, so make sure you come out and vote, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Hough. Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions, three items um in this category. Um, the first is introduction of annexation resolution number twenty-five dash zero six, annexation eighty-seven. Um, ten twelve BWMD LLC petition for annexation for to enlarging for enlargement, the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus one point two acres uh contiguous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property located at ten twelve Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. Also identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two nine seven four eight, map zero zero four six, grid zero zero nine six, parcel zero six one six. Um, and uh Mr. Deepo is on with us tonight. Um, so Ms. Gilbert, would you like to uh tell us this all about?
Yeah, uh, good evening. So um, one zero one two BWMD LLC, who is the petitioner, is requesting that the mayor and common council annex approximately one point two acres, which is located at one zero one two Boulevard into the corporate, corporate limits of the city of Westminster. The annexation area is zone C two, which is commercial medium um intensity district and under Carroll County zoning. Petitioners are requesting that the property be zone B business under the city zoning ordinance. Development in the B business zone and the C two commercial medium intensity district are very similar and therefore need no zoning waiver from the, from Carroll County Commissioners. The petitioner is proposing to open an adult daycare facility, which um a daycare facility as well as um adult daycare, both are permitted under both the C two um medium intensity district as well as the B business zone. The property is located outside of the city, but is located in our water and sewer service areas, so it is required to take a look at for annexation, it is contiguous to the city, but the property does ha- is on an on site well, which the Carroll County Health Department has allowed for the use of this purpose. Um, it does say that there is enough permitted yield for the well so that it it is allowed to be used for this use. However, it does need additional sewer capacity, which is why, why the property is coming into the city. Uh, the annexation petition was submitted by uh, that was submitted and meets all of the state requirements. It has been signed by the owners of a hundred percent of the assessed valuation of the real property in the annexation area. No one resides in the property. Um, it was previously a real estate office. Uh, the property is contiguous to and is joining to the existing boundaries of the city. The annexation of the property will not create an enclave. Um, and therefore, staff recommends that the mayor and common council introduce resolution number twenty-five oh six for annexation number eighty-seven to allow the annexation process to officially begin. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Alright, thanks very much. May we have a motion uh for introduction of annexation resolution number twenty-five dash zero six?
Mr. President, I'll make such a motion.
The motion by Mr. Hough is there a second?
Second.
And the second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, any discussion or any questions for the planning department, Mr. President, Mr. Kavachi?
Ms. Gilbert, you might not know how to answer this, but Simba, you might. Um, how do we meter sewer only? Is, is that something meterable? I'm not sure that's actually a word. Um, it's a great word. So how do we know what this, what their usage is?
So to my understanding, they are gonna be able to put a meter on the well to be able to see how much usage that the well is doing and it's automatically assume that the amount of wa- water that they're using is the amount of sewage that they're using.
So all of their sewer will go into our system? They're not gonna continue to use the septic field or whatever is there currently? Cause they're not connected to our sewer currently, correct?
Yes, so they are gonna be required, everything will be required.
They'll cut their system out and go singularly on our system. Well, then yeah, sure, metering the water just like we do for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else like to ask anything or anybody have a comment? Alright, hearing none, move on to a vote. This is again is for introduction tonight. Um, all those in favor of introduction of annexation resolution number twenty-five dash zero six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, yeah, I seem to have the United's habit and um the annexation resolution is properly introduced and will go now to the planning commission, I believe, and uh they'll report back to us later. Thank you. Next item, we've adopted the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five, in ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for the city of Westminster for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, also known as fiscal year twenty-six, and establishing various tax, city tax rates for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, let's go ahead and get a motion on this and then we can go on to various comments.
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
There's a motion to uh uh adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, is there a second?
I'll second.
The second by Mr. Hough, thank you. Alright, so let's start with the mayor. Mayor Becker, anything you'd like to uh add on this?
I have a few comments I'd like to uh say before we stop some discussions, so thank you, Mr. President. So it gives me great pleasure to present the fiscal year twenty-six budget for approval. The budget re- represents a great deal of fiscal responsibility on the part of the city. It is a balanced budget showing moderate increases in both revenue and spending to meet the city's needs in both the short term and the long term to ensure success in the future. A few highlights included in the budget are raises for the staff, continuation of work at Wakefield Valley, ongoing inflow and infiltration projects, continuation of holiday lights, downtown infrastructure projects, and uh what I'm very excited for is funding for Pure Water Westminster, our water recycling facility. I'd like to add that all this has been accomplished without raising taxes on the residents of Westminster. This is the thirteenth year in the city of Westminster in which taxes have not been raised. Um, and I want to say thank you to the council um for their careful consideration of the budget when we had those two lone work sessions um within this past week. And again, thank you to uh Ms. Simba for leading the charge uh on the budgets uh as uh Mrs. Rogers and all of the staff involved. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanna add my thanks. Uh, first of all, to, to you and Mr. Kavachi as members of finance committee, um on behalf as chair of the finance committee. Um, you know, uh, I think that uh, you know, our stewardship as a group, the mayor and council, you know, over the last, not just this past year, but you know, the last several years, um it's critical in allowing us to maintain the kind of fiscal discipline we've had that allows us to take, you know, relatively, as you said, mayor, you know, a uh, you know, modest increase in um revenues due to uh rise in property values, you know, and allow us to continue to have the same tax rate with citizens of Westminster. And in doing so, continue to provide the services at the same level what we have done in the past, which our citizens want and deserve. And I think that's, that's very important, that's what we strive to do. So um, thanks to everybody who's participating in that, Ms. Simba, Ms. Rogers, um, Scott, Ms. Gardner, yes, um, or uh or outside consulting CFO, and um and the rest of the city staff, I know the department heads also work very hard to present uh, you know, thoughtful budget requests that allow them to do the work that's important to them while maintaining that fiscal discipline we talked about. Um, and also I just wanna add a word of thanks, in particular to Ms. Simba uh for her diligent work, you know, as well as the rest of the staff in seeking out uh federal and state grants uh that allow us to stretch city resources even further so that we're able to accomplish some really important things here in the city and growth figure, uh some of these we worked on. So with that, we'll go to Ms. Rogers and she can uh give us a little more detail explanation. Ms. Rogers, thank you again for all of your good work.
Thank you, Chris and Pecorero. Alright, you have before you um ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five. Um, this is very similar to what you saw when it was introduced several weeks ago. Those changes that have been incorporated um that are notated in here, I believe in bold, um are changes that were discussed um with the mayor and council um at our last couple of work sessions. Um, so they were all discussed, nothing new there. Um, just wanna thank you for the time and energy that you put into this very thoughtful budget um to move uh everything forward and to continue on the path and the strategic plan that we have in place. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you would have. That's our budget.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Uh, before we have any further discussion, um, as Ms. Rogers noted, that we have refined the budget based on the comments that were received at the work session, so um, it's a slightly di- different document than was originally presented and so, um, without objection, um, I ask that uh the revised ordinance be substituted for the one originally introduced as an amendment in form of substitute. Um, is there any objection? There are none, no surrender. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Hough.
Um, I just wanna compliment yourself and uh Mayor Becker and Councilman Kavachi uh as the, the finance committee, having served on that committee the first two years of my term. Um, I well know the amount of time and effort and thought and debate that goes um into the budget uh via the finance committee, uh so I really appreciate your efforts in this regard. Um, it's nice to, to sit back on a year like this and not have to obsess about the, the budget as much as maybe I did the first few years. Um, and then I also very much appreciate all the effort that staff has put into this because we have really uh demonstrated, at least in my time of being here, um and understanding our financial situation, our reserves and such. Um, we are very fiscally responsible and as you uh you've already touched on, I think we do a really good job of leveraging our relationships throughout the state um and even on the federal level to bring additional funding in to the city of Westminster. Um, that really allows us to, to punch level our weight. Um, and um, I, I just really thank everybody's efforts in that regard. Uh, cause it's really a lot of work that's going on on multiple levels, both upon us as a council, but also in a staff level um and, and otherwise. So I really appreciate everybody's hard work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hough. Anyone else, Mr. Wehrt?
Mr. President, Mr. Kavachi. Say briefly, doing a lot of good stuff, not raising taxes, but the dark race.
Very good.
Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kavachi. Alright, hearing no further discussion, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five, uh the budget for the coming fiscal year, please say aye.
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 Those who both say nay, yeah, I seem to have it, the eyes have it, and the ordinance is adopted and you have a budget for the next year, so that's good. We're doing better than Congress does, you know.
Not bringing that far.
It'll go.
Sadly, it is.
I don't think you can even raise a resolution.
No.
Next item is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, uh fiscal year twenty-five, budget amendment number one. Ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, Maryland, mending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Uh, the city's fiscal year commenced on July first of twenty twenty-four. In accordance with section twenty dash two of the code of the city of Westminster, the city administrator prepared a budget for the mayor to present to the cabin council for consideration. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, approving a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, was adopted on May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four. During this current fiscal year, the city has incurred additional expenses that exceed the current appropriation and therefore additional appropriations are necessary. A summary of the proposed additions is included and the funding sources summarize as follows. Two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seven cents using new intergovernmental funds or grants. Two million, two million, eight hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-nine cents using general fund reserves. Eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents using sewer fund reserves. Seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents using sewer benefit assessments and three hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents using water fund reserves for total additional appropriations needed of four million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents. As the um memo states, uh with the ordinance, there is a summary of all of the activity that additional appropriations are needed for. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. At this time, staff is recommending that the mayor and common council introduce the amended budget appropriations as detailed in the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I, I remind you this is for introduction. Uh, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven?
Mr. President, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hough. There's a motion to introduce, is there a second?
Yes.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, so move on to discussion, let me just ask before we get into any questions or comments. Um, you know, this is a practice we began when Ms. Simba joined us and I wanna thank her for suggesting this, you know, we used to kind of do this in a more pieced-down, haphazard way. Uh, we have begun gathering these into a more formal budget amendment, which I think makes a lot more sense for us and so I'm glad that we've, we've been going down that path the last couple of years. Um, these are all items which we have approved in various votes at a number of meetings along the way and all items for which we have identified fund sources, um, you know, to make sure that we were able to do these things. Um, so with that, is there any further questions or any discussion on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hough.
Um, I just wanna uh uh say my appreciation to Ms. Rogers for the, I'm assuming you're the one who prepared the very detailed uh spreadsheet and it's, it's very helpful and I appreciate all the detail uh because I can go through it and it refreshes my memory, oh, I remember that. Um, so I really appreciate the detailed spreadsheet um as part of the budget amendment, uh it's very, very helpful, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Hough. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, move on to vote. A reminder, this is for introduction tonight. Um, all those in favor of the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, budget amendment number one uh for fiscal twenty-five, please say aye.
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 Those who both say nay, you know, I seem to have the United's habit and uh the ordinance is a news study, we'll come back to us at the next ready meeting. There is no unfinished business, of which I'm aware. Uh, we have one item of new business and for that I will turn to the mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, as my colleagues know, we recently conducted interviews for a new city attorney. I want to say thank you to uh all my colleagues on the uh common council uh for their participation in the process. And I am pleased to present uh Mr. Ramsey and Whitworth of Silverman Thompson for approval as Westminster City Attorney.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Uh, there's been a uh, a certain role participant in this conversation. Um, the mayor has uh, has put the name of Mr. Ramsey Whitworth before us and from Silverman Thompson. Um, I have a motion to approve the mayor's uh.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. DeHaas, is there a second?
Okay.
The second by Mr. Kavachi. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? Oh, it's sorry, it's Mr. Kavachi.
Yes, one quick thing, I think we'd be remiss not to thank Mr. Ruff for their service over the past fourteen years, fourteen years. Uh, this was in primarily his point, but you've certainly played a significant role in the relationship as well and uh we're very grateful for all the hard work you guys put into fourteen years here uh keeping us out of trouble, which probably wasn't always easy to do, given some of us. So I thank, thank you for that and I thank you for all the hard work. I know our relationship is gonna continue. You're still gonna do work with the city in, in some other capacities, so we're excited about that. You're still going to do work with the city in in some other capacities, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kavachi. I was going to add that we're pleased that, you know, we continue our relationship with the firm. And with Ms. Roth and this board in particular, helping us as we properly separate some of those, you know, items for those boards away from our main representation. So that's that's probably the next thing for us to be doing, and we appreciate the opportunity. We'll have to continue.
Thank you.
Just again, thank you all, Ms. Levin, for all the great work you've done for us over many years. I was here when we all were, you know, originally hired, you know, as a city attorney, and it's been, you know, it's been great relationship. Thank you very much. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Ramsey Whitworth as the city attorney, please say aye.
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 Those who both say nay, you know, I seem to have it, the ayes have it. Now move on to Ms. Imhols to lead us through the department reports.
Thank you, sir. I want to start off today by talking about our MVP of the week, which is our city clerk, Doug Barber. Yes, laws are definitely in order. Doug has really gone above and beyond for the residents, the voting residents of the city of Westminster. He has made sure that he has not taken off at any time during which a resident could submit an absentee ballot. Or register to vote, which of course doesn't happen here, but happens at the county. He has not taken off a single day, even though he needed one, he deserved one, he had time for one. Because he wanted to make sure that this election went as smoothly as possible. He will be here tomorrow along with other city staff working this event, which we consider an event at four thirty tomorrow morning. Even though he's here tonight with the council meeting with you all. And putting together a packet for the council meeting shortly after putting together the budget ordinances. So it's been a very, very heavy lift for the past six weeks, heavier for the past couple of weeks. And we certainly are, Doug brings a lot of value to our organization. And that election tomorrow is going to go off without a hitch solely because of his effort. So thank you, Mr. Barber. Okay, speaking of staff who show up at four thirty in the morning, we had a couple of events on Saturday. For the Recreation Department and the Public Works Department. I'm actually going to start with Public Works for just a moment to thank them for getting up bright and early and working a very, very long day for multiple events on the same day. So thank them, I'd like to thank the staff for that. I also want to bring to your attention something that our garbage and recycling contractor has brought to my attention. Which is that some of the residents in town who use garbage and recycling are putting their trash in the recycling bin. So we need to be more diligent about what's in the recycling bin. And we're not totally sure why that's happening, but I think. Some decades ago, we were much more stringent about what we put in recycling bins. And now I think we all think to ourselves, it's cardboard, it's plastic, it can go in the bins. That's absolutely not true. If it's a pizza box, it can't go in the bin. If it's a clam shell that you got from your takeout menu, it can't go in the bin, and on and on and on. So the residents can expect to receive notification from the garbage and recycling company through the mail. Everyone's going to get something that says, hey, just a reminder, this is what belongs to the recycling bins. And those who are putting garbage or into their recycling bins will also get a little reminder in their bin about what they're not supposed to be doing. And if that isn't, if that behavior isn't corrected, their recycling may not get collected. So we want to make sure that the residents are are paying attention to recycling. Are there any questions about that before we move on?
Ms. Imhols.
Sir.
So I I I had no idea you could put one of those types of clam shells in recycling. And there's probably other things that I've put in there, assuming that they are recyclable. And I suspect that the vast majority of people doing that are not doing it nefariously. They're doing it thinking they're doing a good thing, but just not being clear on what can and can't be recycled. So maybe it behooves us to, maybe our contractor will help, you know, do do whatever needs to be done. Or if we do it in our our newsletter or in the water bills as a separate little buck slip or something. But maybe a quick reminder of what is and isn't appropriate to go into the bin. Because clearly, I I'm not even clear on it, because I know I've put those clam shells you're talking about in there. So I suspect that's probably more the case. Look, if somebody's going to take the time to separate their stuff out, they're not doing it because they're lazy. It's extra work. It'd be easier just to throw all the stuff in the trash can. So I I I suspect the vast majority of people are doing it out of ignorance, as am I.
The garbage and recycling company is going to mail something to all of you that indicates what can and what cannot go on there. There's also an app that you could participate in if you want to. It's unrelated to that company. But it's it's sort of, you know, can my, can this go in or not? You can scan the back of your thing and the app will tell you that. That's all going to be on that piece of paper that's going to get sent. And if you are one of the ones that are, that's going to get sent to everyone, just generally get the information out. If you're one of the ones that are putting the wrong thing in the recycling bin, you may also get an extra one in your bin to remind you of what to do, what not to do. And then if that continues to be an issue, your bin may not get collected. So we anticipate getting calls about that, as we always do, if things don't get collected. But we think the behavior will change because of that. And then, of course, the reason this is happening is because the landfill is cracking down on garbage being sent to the recycling landfill. So the company is being charged a fee, it's a case that they're they're not allowed to collect it. They're actually, the employees at the landfill are sifting through, looking for problems. So we need to crack down on our side.
Any other questions I might add in before we move on?
Okay, our second team that was at the four thirty in the morning for Saturday's events are the Recreation and Parks Department. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Thank you so much. We are now fully focused on all of the cleaning and preparation ahead of us for our pool opening coming up on May twenty fourth. So staff has been working hard up there to make sure that everything sparkles and shines for opening day. We've also unboarded many of our lifeguards and assistant managers and managers at this point. So we will be holding orientation and training sessions for them. Not only to orient them to the facility itself, but just to the summer staff. And some of the policies and procedures that are important to their success as a city of Westminster Recreation and Parks Department staff member. One short week after that, we will host our Pickle in the Park pickleball tournament on May thirty first and June first. Two weeks after that, Westminster will host its Beer and Barbecue Stroll. And two days after the Beer and Barbecue Stroll, we will welcome all of our summer campers. So we have quite an aggressive cadence of events coming our way, but we are well prepared to handle all of them. And we are eager to get the summer started. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Are there any questions?
I I do. Ms. Gruber, can you remind me, the community pool is only open on weekends until the schools are out, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Imhols.
Sir.
Are we trying to do some renovations at the moment? Are they coming?
They're in the process of locker room renovations, and they are on schedule.
Thank you. That was an important infrastructure group. Thank you, Ms. Imhols.
Welcome. Any other questions for the Recreation and Parks Department?
Hearing none, we will move on to the Human Resources Department. I'm very excited to welcome tonight Ms. Charisse Brown to her first meeting, and we are so excited to have you here tonight. Ms. Brown?
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the council for the warm welcome and this. The pleasure that it is to serve as the Director of Human Resources for the city. Also want to thank the director team for the welcome that they have given me, bringing me aboard and showing support to help me to be successful in this role. The only thing that I have to report out is that we are vastly approaching our FY twenty six benefit open enrollment for all employees. Employees will be reminded about that upcoming event that will be happening kicking off on May nineteenth. And we're excited to support staff as they review their elections and any changes that they might want to make. So thank you.
Mayor and Council, we will have that wrapped up before the next council meeting. So for those of you who utilize the health insurance, don't forget that the forms that will get sent out must be submitted, even if you don't want to make a change to what you currently have. Thank you, Ms. Imhols. All right, there are no further questions. We'll move on to the IT Department. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, we're coming off our busiest one ever since we started keeping track of tech. It's been very busy in IT, supporting the backend things and doing some backend projects, just going through what we have. But other than that, I don't have a report.
That's a very humble version of his participation. The last two weeks.
I'm too expected, right?
We are learning more and more that we can't do a single thing without the IT department, so we're so grateful for all that you do. Thank you. All right, hearing no questions, let's move on to the Housing Department. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to remind everyone here, as well as people who may be tuning in, that rental housing licenses expires on June third. They get a grace period until July thirty first. After July thirty first, then we start charging each month that the license is late. So to assist them, that we will start mailing out reminder notices to everyone that has a license that they need to renew. So that will go out this week. The first wave will go Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday up until Friday. It may take us until Friday to get everything through, but before this week out, it will all be out. They will get a second reminder in mid-June. That this is your last chance, you know, get it done after July thirty first, then you will be charged a late fee. So just wanted to to remind you, and if you have friends and relatives who may be landlords and have a rental license, then they'll need to get that done by July thirty first. So but we'll, we have at this point, then we will consider, we have about thirty three hundred individual licenses. So but that's, that's, you know, some, some, some landlords have multiple properties, and then you have several, several properties that have a hundred or more. So that's, you know, that it seems like a lot, and it actually is, but the thirty three hundred is just not just one individual. But it's some large things in there as well. So we'll do our best to assist anybody that may have some, some challenges connecting with us or connecting through the system. So we'll try to work with them to make sure that it's as smooth as it possibly can be. We do know occasionally that they run into some problems, and we do what we can to try to, you know, work, work through that. So but as a reminder, it'll be there. We'll also reach out to the landlord association, just so that they can spread the word as well. So I'll be happy to ask any question that we have, but that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Um, the the reminders, those go out through the postal service?
They will be emailed to everyone that we have an email address. It will be, there's, it will also go in the regular mail to the last, to whatever address we have on record.
Thank you. Oh, this, Mr. Brown, so as as part of the licensing agreement, do landlords agree? Because it's been many years since I booked that, so I apologize. Do they agree to abide by, you know, other city regulations and ordinances as part of all that?
Yes.
All right, so, because I keep seeing all these inappropriate rental signs all over town. And it's really, and people have complained to me about it. It's, you know, can we, is there something we can do about that? Remind these folks that they can't be putting up these, you know, for rent signs, you know, on all these properties.
You're referring to the permanent.
Yeah, that just means it's permanent signs. And not true, no, there's permanent signs. It looks like half the city's out for rent. It just looks terrible. And, you know, they think they should know there's upsets against the code. And, you know, I think we need to do something about it, because for too long, people have been lax about following the rules. And I think we need to get on these folks and tell them, look, you know, if you're signing this, aren't you signing this agreement, is you can't have those signs up.
We'll do, we'll, we'll follow up on that. We have had some that we've been, we've had to remind that on that. In some cases, the planning department also works with us on this issue as well, so that we'll, we'll continue to be diligent about that.
Thank you. We, you know, it's taken a while. People weren't getting the message. If we have to find them, I think we ought to do that. Because, you know, people just totally disregard the codes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
I I'm in total agreement with the the president. These permanent signs being up is just, you know, I have used myself, if I have a vacancy, I put up a sign. And when I feel the vacancy, the sign is gone. Uh, this idea of like permanently having up these signs is, is, I I don't like it. Um, and I I think we need to to take action in regard to that. Also, Mr. Brown, I just want to clarify, when you say thirty three hundred. So if I have a four unit apartment building, that that's four of that thirty three hundred, right?
That's correct.
For, it it's the number of units.
Right.
I'm kind of curious, over time, has that number continued to go up, or is it about the same, or has it gone down over the past like four years?
It's been relatively stable. We see some fluctuations. And and some of this is 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 due to us discovering people who was were supposed to have a rental license but did not, so that gets added to it. But for the most part, it's been pretty stable.
Been pretty stable.
It's been pretty stable.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, because that could be an indication of, you know, that sometimes rental units can disappear off the market too, depending on what's, what's going on, or or more can go on. So it's kind of, you know, the one thing saying having rental licensing and if you're actually, you know, making sure everybody gets it that's supposed to get it. It gives you a real kind of sense of what's going on in the property. So that's, I was kind of curious about.
Yes, and 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 we see, we see units changing hands. You, some of them just, you know, just small, you know, just one unit, couple of units. And then every once in a while, we see some of the larger units changing hands. But we try to keep a, keep an eye on that. Uh, make sure that, you know, we, we are diligent in terms of making sure that they live up to their responsibility. And conform to what the code requires.
Thank you, sir.
My turn? Let's move on to the Planning Department then. Mr. Depot's out today, but we have Ms. Gerhardt with us. Gerhardt?
Yes, so I know that Mark updated you about the Board of Zoning Appeals case that was supposed to take place in May. And that's been continued to the June meeting, so we will hear from that then. Historic District Commission meeting on May seventh, the commission conducted their annual elections. And then also continued their conversations about the two hundred and fiftieth nation's anniversary. Uh, Planning Commission is scheduled for May fifteenth. We actually have two old business items that are coming back before the Planning Commission, two different work sessions. One is a Zonal Map Amendment, which is for the properties out near Sullivan, on Sullivan Road, which is the twenty two over twos. For a total of forty dwelling units, also known as the Willows. So it's coming back with some ideas for architecture and to get the Planning Commission's thoughts about what, what they think about that. The other one is Wakefield Valley Development Plan Amendment. Uh, we, the commission has seen it before. Um, this is for parcel W and parcel X. So the applicant is requesting to amend Wakefield Valley Development Plan, which was from two, twenty twenty three. And they are going to be bringing in a, it's now a thirty five unit new development. And with parcel X going to be dedicated to Carol Lutheran Village for open space. So they're bringing it forward as a conversation to see what the Planning Commission's thoughts are. That's just a step in the process for how a development plan is forward. But in all of this, things that the Planning Commission has already seen before, and so these are resubmissions. That's what our, what we're planning on doing. We're also really excited for the farmer's market to be opening this weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Are there any questions?
Ms. Imhols. While while we have you here, I wanted to congratulate you on your.
While while we have you here, I wanted to congratulate you on your efforts in the nonprofit world. I get to see a little bit of what you do with your bear organization, and it's it's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, as a member of the city group, it makes me very proud to see that, the effort, time you put into it. It's, that's really cool.
Thank you so much.
So just wanted to congratulate you on your success and growth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the planning department? Okay, we're gonna move on to the finance department, but first I have to give a few kudo, kudos here. Um it is astounding that we were able to have a budget meeting on a Wednesday, and then the packet get out to the council on a Thursday and to the public on a Friday. Um that just is unheard of, and it happened because of the dedication and expertise that Ms. Rogers brings to the table, and also the rest of the staff that stayed around to help get that together. If we didn't have that and we needed a week to prepare, which we would have otherwise, we would have had to have more condensed council meetings back to back to back in order to give staff proper time to make those adjustments in the, in the meeting. So I just want to take an opportunity to thank Ms. Rogers. Um she has been working round the clock, and I think that the outcome shows. So thank you. It's your turn, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Imols. Um good evening again. Uh thank you again, Mayor and Council, um for adopting the twenty-sixth budget. And as with that, I would take a big breath. And now the finance department moves on to fiscal year-end close probably already. Um so we are planning our entrance meeting with our auditors next week to begin preparing for our upcoming audits. Um last year, our preliminary audit, where they come out and they test what they can before we finish closing everything, took place um the third of July. So I'm anticipating that we'll get that scheduled when we talk next week. So um that's what we're setting our sights on, um preparing for the audit and for our fiscal year-end close. That's our next big project.
Any questions for Ms. Rogers? Okay, Chief Ledwell is on some much-needed time off, and so we are so pleased to have um um the major with us tonight. Uh and I want to thank you and your team for the efforts that you put in this weekend. We had a lot of police presence at variety events going on on Saturday, um speaking to the public and making sure that we were all safe, staying safe. I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Imols. And uh good evening again, and it's a pleasure to be here. Uh chief is on some well-deserved rest, so I'm glad that you got to do that. I don't have much. I just got two things to note. Uh WPD is gonna be holding a hiring event on May seventeenth uh from eight AM to one PM. Uh the neat thing about this is we actually have thirty-nine applicants uh that are invited. So we've definitely seen a uptick in applications coming into WPD when other agencies have. So that's a great thing. So we're very happy about that. Uh the second thing is Universal Utilities has begun the preliminary work on installation of the new emergency generator uh at police headquarters. Uh they're out there today, starting to cut some concrete and get that going. We expect the project to take approximately three to four months, but I know that's been a project that's been uh well, in the hot, in the hot for several years, but it it's underway. So we're excited about that, and thank you all for your support.
Are there any questions for Major Price? Our final item, Mr. President, is we, the staff would like to wish all of the candidates good luck, and we'll be excited and willing to work with all of the winners. That concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Ms. Imols, and thanks to all this department heads over this, this evening, for, with your thoughts. But finally, item on our agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. For citizens not attending uh the meeting here in person, we invite you to send us your comments via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the man and council. We do ask commenters, emailists, who include their address and phone number with their comments. Uh I'll invite comments from anyone whose presence seemed. I don't think anybody for the public, other than folks who've already spoken to us, are are here, Doc Smith, anything like that? Nice. I'll put you on the spot. Um thank you all then. Uh we'll uh we'll close citizens' comments. Um and uh thanks all of you who joined us this evening. That concludes our agenda and the meeting. The mayor and council will have their organizational meeting on Monday, May nineteenth, at which time the uh newly elected mayor, you know, the members of his sworn in, and the council is select its officers. And with that, without objection, we adjourn.
Thank you.